You're good to go.
Okay. Good evening. This is. I am Paul Alpert, the Planning Board Chair. This open meeting of the Needham Planning Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with current state regulations, in effect at least for the next few hours. And it's being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This meeting will not have public comment, except in connection with any hearing that is on the agenda. There is one hearing that is on the agenda for 1688 Central Avenue in Needham. And when we get to it, you'll see that we will probably shortly after opening, continue the hearing. And so there won't be any public comment unless there's a public comment to continue the hearing. First, we'll confirm that a quorum of the members of the Planning Board are present. When I call your name, please respond that you are present. And then I will introduce the Planning Department and other town staff. So Jean McKnight.
Here.
Adam Block.
Here.
Marty Jacobs.
Here.
And Natasha Estrada is not here. For those participating in the, in the meeting, please be aware that others may be able to see you and hear you. Anything that you share or state will be a matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.nodemma.gov, unless otherwise noted. Some meeting ground rules. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Each of the speakers on our agenda will be introduced. After speakers conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked by name for any comment, questions, or motions. All votes will be by roll call. For each participant, please remember to state your name for the record before speaking. For each person from the public who was recognized to speak, please remember to state your name and address for the record before speaking. We've gone through the preliminary matters. It is 7:23. And the first item on our agenda is a public hearing scheduled for 7:20. Major project site plan. Needham Enterprises LLC, 105 Chestnut Street. Suite 28, Needham, Massachusetts, the petitioner for the property located at 1688 Central Avenue, Needham, Massachusetts, regarding a proposal to construct a new childcare facility of 9,966 square feet and 30 parking spaces that would house an existing Needham childcare business, the Needham Children's Center. I hereby open that public hearing. We have a letter received this afternoon from Evans Huber of Freeze Kramer Rosen and Huber, the attorney for the petitioner. And he writes, Dear Planning Board Members and Ms. Newman, I am writing on behalf of Needham Enterprises LLC to request that the hearing on this matter be continued to July 20. This request is being made to allow the board time to review and receive comments from appropriate town departments regarding the applicant's recent filings. I will digress a little bit here to state that just this past Thursday, we received revised plans for this project and a revised traffic report. We have not had a chance to review it. And there are other town, town boards and departments that need to review those documents also and comment to us. And so it makes sense to, to at least, to, to give us all time to do that. Mr. Huber continues, "And to review the various recent comments submitted by neighborhood groups and/or their council." In response to, and I am digressing here, in response to that filing, we have received multiple comments from neighbors. And we have not had a chance to review those comments yet either. So it's understandable that the applicant's counsel hasn't had a chance to review them. He continues, "And to accommodate the board's request that the applicant's traffic analysis be peer reviewed," which we have made that request through our planning director. And Mr. Huber does confirm that the applicant has agreed to pay for the Planning Board's peer review of the applicant's traffic analysis. And so with that, I want to take a motion. Well, first, I'll say, is there any, is there any discussion among the Planning Board members about this letter?
My only, my only comment is that doesn't appear to say anything about extending the action deadline. Do we need to do that, Lee?
Not, not at this point. I think if, if, if the next time, we'll have to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Before I ask-
Perhaps I'll say that I very much appreciate the, the attention the Design Review Board has given to this project. And in its most recent communication about this project dated May 14th, the Design Review Board said it's available to review the project again if additional design development is done at its future meetings. And so I, I expect and I hope that we will have further communication from the Design Review Board, particularly with regard to lighting, building design, landscaping. So all the more reason for the continuance.
Thank you, Jean. Before I open it up to the public for, for questions and comments, can I have a motion?
I move, Mr. Chair, that we that we continue the hearing to July 20. I believe that's the, that's the correct date of our next meeting.
No, our next meeting is on the 29th, but we're continuing this to July 20th.
Okay, so I move, Mr. Chair, that we, to continue the hearing to July 20.
At what time, Lee?
7:20.
At 7:20 PM. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Do we have any further discussion among the board? Do we have any participants who would like to make any comment? Please raise your hand in the, on the raise hand button.
I don't see anyone, Mr. Chair, that, that's called in either.
Neither do I. Alex and Clay, do you see anyone? Any hands raised?
There are no hands raised.
Okay, so, so with that, we'll call the vote. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
And I vote aye. It's unanimous by the four of us, a four-nothing vote. This matter is continued to July 20th at 7:20 PM.
Mr. Chair, could I ask for an additional motion just to clarify the issue on the peer review on the traffic study? Could I ask for a motion that the board finds that a traffic study peer review is warranted in, in this case? And instructs the applicant that we're going to be moving forward with that and authorizes me to, in fact, engage a company for that purpose?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Question, I just have a question. How do you choose the peer reviewer, Lee?
Well, we have a, there are a couple of companies that are on, the town has a a contract with that, for engineering services. So we could use GPI or we could use, I think, Beta we've used in the past. I think Beta we used as, as a peer reviewer for the hospital. And GPI was the company that we used for the MUSI study, but both of them are under contract with the town through the engineering department. So I'm allowed, I'm allowed to utilize them without going through a full procurement process.
All right, thank you.
Does anybody on the board have a preference between GPI and Beta?
I, I would probably have a preference towards GPI.
I also thought GPI did a very good job with the recent MUSI rezoning traffic report.
Okay, then I'll reach out to them initially and see if they can do it within our timeline.
Very good. So we have a motion that's been seconded. Any further discussion? Since it's part of a public hearing, if, if the public would like to comment, if anybody would like to raise their hand, if they have a comment or a question on this.
Mr. Chair, I see that Maggie Abruzi.
Mr. Chair, I thought we continued the hearing on this when we're not opening it.
Well, we opened the hearing in order to have these motions.
Okay.
So Ms. Abruzi, I will recognize you. Again, please state your name and address for the record when you have been given access to comment.
So Paul, this is Alex. Should I move Maggie over then to be the panelist?
Yes.
Just one second.
Did it work? This is Maggie Abruzi.
It did. Good to see you. Welcome.
Hi. Thank you. It's Maggie Abruzi at 30 Bridle Trail.
So, yes, yes, Maggie.
My question is, is the board going to deliberate or discuss at all the implications of ethical violations on this matter?
Since we have told people in advance that we were, we were going to continue this hearing, there is nobody here from the, from the applicant's side. There are probably a lot fewer neighbors than would normally be here if we were going to do that. And so we are going to defer all discussion on all items until July 20.
Okay.
Okay.
So if it is decided that the board needs to seek a determination from the State Ethics Commission, that wouldn't happen until after discussing it on July 20th?
I don't think it's fair to comment on anything that's in front of the board tonight because, as I said, people are not here because they anticipated that we would just be continuing the hearing. And so I'm going to leave all discussion on all matters until July 20.
Okay. Thank you.
I can't give you a better answer than that.
That's okay. I appreciate it.
Anything else?
That was all I had.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Miss, another hand, Carl Jonison. Alex, you want to move Mr. Jonison over?
You'll have to unmute yourself. And if you want your camera on, turn it on.
Jonison, you're still muted. We still don't have your video. And his hand is now down, so.
Well, it's because he's been transferred over, I think, as a, as a panelist. Carl, you're, you're muted. If you can hear us, Carl, we cannot see you and we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
So I have a question about this traffic study that you're going to, a peer traffic study or that you're going to redo or something.
A peer review, yes.
So I assume this is going to take place after school is out of session?
Well, today-
So what's, what's the point of doing another traffic study when the kids are out of school, when that all should go and count towards the traffic that's on Central Avenue?
I'm not sure whether they will be conducting an actual traffic study or whether they will be reviewing the traffic study that has been presented to us in order to comment on whether they feel that the traffic study that we received has been done properly and reaches proper conclusions. Lee, do you have a comment?
It will be done. The purpose of the, of the peer review is to look at the information that the applicant has provided and to give us a separate, independent opinion as to whether or not it's followed, you know, appropriate traffic engineering practice and whether or not the consultant agrees with the recommendations or if there are deficiencies for the consultant that we hired to identify them so that the Planning Board can request that the applicant provide whatever supplemental information the peer reviewer calls out.
Okay.
Is that any question?
Sure. So since the developer thinks that Central Avenue is an A rating, I'm having a hard time swallowing all of that, but nonetheless.
Well, the, um, the, the peer reviewer will have, have the public records and the information that, that that is available by the town and is presented in the three versions of the traffic studies that we've received to see whether they agree that it deserves an A rating. They may come back and say that it's not an A rating. We do not expect them to do their own counts, but, but they've, as we said, they, they are reviewing the traffic studies that the applicant's traffic engineer has presented and will comment on, on whether it was proper that they reached the conclusion that it's, that it should be A rated.
So, Mr. Chair, you are aware that that traffic study was during, done during COVID?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely, we're aware of that.
Okay. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I see a hand raised by Holly Clark. Alex, please move Holly over.
Hi.
Aye.
Hi, thank you. Holly Clark, I live at 1652 Central Avenue. My question is, is it possible to give the reviewer the material that the neighbors have submitted for their consideration as well? In terms of there's information about the real experience of people living here and describing what traffic is like, what their reality is, so that the reviewer can, can look at that and apply weight or not as their expertise would suggest?
Thank you for mentioning that and bringing that up. That's, that's all been presented to us and is therefore part of the file and part of the public record. And so I would hope that the peer reviewer would, would look at what is part of our file with regard to the traffic.
Okay. So, so the board will, will give that to the reviewer and then the reviewer will
We will-
Do whatever the reviewer does, but, but it will be available to the reviewer.
Well, it's, it, it's available on the town website. We will, we will point out to the reviewer that the information is there and how the reviewer can, can access the material on the town, on the town's website.
Okay, so, thank you.
I leave it, and I leave it up to Lee Newman as to whether she wants to get my copies.
Okay. Oh, I, I, whether it's hard copies or, I, I guess my request is that amongst the information the board give to the reviewer is not just the proponents' traffic studies, but also the additional information which the reviewer could then consider in making his evaluation.
We will, I am asking Lee Newman to make sure that the reviewer is aware that that information is available to him either by giving hard copies to the reviewer or by saying you can, you can look at those materials on the town's site.
Great. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Mr. Jonison has his hand up again. And Mr. Jonison, I'm not sure that you gave us your address.
Carl, you're muted.
Still muted, Carl.
We've lost Carl.
Okay.
He's not on the participant list anymore either.
Nope, he's not on the participant list and he's not on the attendees list. He seems to have signed off. Do we have anybody else who would like to raise a hand to make a comment?
Alex or Clay, did, did Mr. Jonison's connection drop or did we, did he request to be removed?
Well, he could press the leave button himself.
I know.
He's just gone. I, I have no idea what happened.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we need to take a vote on the motion regarding the hiring of a traffic consultant to do the peer review. I'll call the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
Marty Jacobs.
Aye.
And I vote aye. It's unanimous for a nothing. Thank you all. This matter, I don't believe that, unless you all have something else, I don't believe there's anything else to discuss at this time. And so this matter has been continued to July 20th at 7:20.
Mr. Chair, I need to drop now. Thank you very much.
Marty, thank you for being here for this.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Marty. Thank you.
Nope, he's gone. Okay. Next item on the agenda. Board of Appeals hearing for Thursday, June 17. We have their agenda in front of us. There are four cases. Let's quickly go through them. Case, case number one, were there any comments or is there a motion to make no comment?
I have a comment. This is a request, this is an application to allow a three-car garage. And the reason given for the three-car garage is that a special permit has already been issued for the construction of an accessory dwelling unit within or attached to this single-family home. I want to say, and I'm not sure if we want to make it a comment, but I, I'd like it to be made clear that the fact that an ADU is created is not a sufficient reason to allow a three-car garage. In this case, however, the three-car garage is set back to replace a, oh, no, excuse me, I, I don't know if it's to replace an existing garage, but it is set back a little over 20 feet from the front entrance of the house and 17 feet from the front wall of the house. And I think that is a, a factor that should be taken into consideration as far as the very, what I perceive to be a very good design of this three-car garage. So I, I might, you know, make a motion that we make such a comment. But, you know, I'll leave it to my colleagues to decide whether we will or not. Well, I guess I will make a motion that we make the comment as I outlined.
Well, let me try to understand your comment then. Is your comment that we wish to point out that the fact of an ADU is not sufficient reason by itself to allow
That's right.
to, to allow a three-car garage. However, the board finds a design for this particular three-car garage to be acceptable to the board?
That's right, exactly. Beautiful wording.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? I think that's a reasonable comment to be made to the ZBA. There's no further comment. We'll take the vote. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And I'm aye. Go to three-nothing. Lee, please send that comment for us. Case number two, 34 Grosvenor Street. I'm sorry, 34 Grosvenor Road. And despite the spelling, it is not pronounced Gross-Venner, it is Grosvenor. Old English, I guess. Do we have any comment to this, to this case, this application? And it's in a P. It's for a special permit.
I have none.
Adam?
No.
I may have a motion for no comment on this.
I move no comment.
And I second that motion.
We'll take the vote. Jean?
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. No comment on case number two. Case number three, 68 Highland Avenue. Special permit seeking a waiver restricted adherence to the parking requirements and design requirements for an alteration of a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming parking lot. Do we have any comment on, on this? Hearing none, may I have a motion for, for no comment?
I move no comment.
I second that motion.
Let's take the roll. Jean McKnight.
Aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. No comment on case number three. And lastly, case number four, 68 Wilshire Park. Multiple requests here, including variances, a special permit. And well, a variance, a special permit and an interpretation or amendment to a prior variance. Do we have some comment on this one?
Yes, I, I do have a concern about this application. One of the, I think there are three separate forms of release requested, and one of them is for a finding at a special permit to allow an alteration or addition to a prior non-conforming structure. But I did not see the evidence of a prior non-conforming structure. And I worry that the applicant is is considering the fact of having received a variance to expand the property in the past to be the situation that creates the non-conformity, which is not in accordance with law. I don't see the non-conformity. So I would make, I would move that we comment that this application be carefully examined to find, to, to, to so that the source of the non-conformity that's referred to is made clear.
I have a second. Sounds reasonable to me. Adam, you have any further discussion?
Not at this time.
Okay. I'll, we'll take the vote. Jean McKnight.
Was there a second? Did Adam second?
Yes, Adam seconded it.
Okay, thank you. Yes, aye.
Adam Block.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We'll send that comment, please. Thank you. Okay, that takes care of our agenda item of the zoning board agendas. Committee appointments. So at our last meeting, we discussed the fact that we have a seat on the Transportation Committee presently held by Stephen McKnight, which expired on May 20, on May 31 of this year. And we have a seat on the the Design Review Board held by Stephen Tanner that expires on June 30, 2021. And we were talking about starting a new procedure where rather than just automatically reappointing rather than just automatically reappointing our, um, our representatives to these committees, if they're willing to serve, that we, that we open it up and, um, ask for, for applications. For various reasons that we discussed at the last meeting and we came to the conclusion that that sounded like a good idea. We have now had some discussion, um, with Mr. Tanner. I don't know if we've had discussion with Mr. McKnight, but, but we may have. And, um, uh, we've given, um, the planning director and I as chair have had some discussion about the fact that, uh, opening up that procedure at this time would be very time consuming and, um, the transportation committee seat has already expired.
Of May 30, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
May 31.
May 31.
Yeah. And the design review board seat expires in a couple of weeks. It would probably take us months to go through the process. And so, um, uh, we would like to, um, reconsider what, what we decided at the last meeting and, uh, reappoint Mr. Tanner and Mr. McKnight to their current positions. I, I understand that they're both willing to serve another term. And that we start the process of, of, um, opening up our committee assignments when one comes due for the next time that we have one in front of the board.
I want to say that, uh, when it comes to Mr. McKnight's appointment, I, I will recuse myself because I am his wife. Mr. McKnight just walked in the door. So if there's any reason you wish to speak directly to him, he is here.
My, uh, my thought of, unless you have something you want to speak to directly with or to Mr., uh, Mr. McKnight, uh, Mr. Chair is, Lee, I would, I would probably recommend that, uh, we start the process today of developing some kind of a framework for opening up the process, uh, for review for whatever the next appointments are. And then we should also, as part of that process, I would probably recommend if the rest of the board, uh, agrees that we have some kind of a regular communication with them, perhaps on a quarterly basis to, um, for them to report into us of whatever issues they're dealing with, whatever challenges they have and how they've been overcoming them. And, uh, and for us, and if they have any other comments for us or questions for us, I don't know if that's done just between the chair, vice chair, the planning director and that individual member, or if they should probably appear before the whole of the board. And, uh, and the, which is probably the better move. And then, um, and in that way, it's kind of free, fair and open and consistent for everybody. I haven't fully thought that through, but that's my thought at this time.
I'm certainly willing to start, you know, the development of a policy. I, I mean, I think we need to have a policy in place and we need to have a timeframe in place so that we're able to advertise and, and fill the position in a timely way. And I think on all the people that we've appointed have a right to know about the change in our protocol and, and how it's, you know, really impacting all the, uh, all the different boards. So certainly I'd be glad to work on that. In terms of having them in on a quarterly basis, I think that might be a little bit cumbersome. Uh, maybe we could do it annually and maybe we could do it through the chair and the, and the vice chair. We can talk about that.
Okay. I would also probably recommend that we figure out a way to post that, not just on our own site, but to have some kind of an open procedure with the public information officer. They may have some additional suggestions or outlets in which we can post it to.
Okay.
So.
I move that we reappoint, uh, Mr. Tanner to the, uh, design review board and Mr. McKnight to the transportation committee.
Okay. I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm not going to accept that motion because with, um, Ms. McKnight's recusal, uh, we do not have a forum.
Correct.
To appoint Mr. McKnight.
So I revise my motion to move Mr. Tanner to the design review board.
Do I have a second?
Second that motion.
Three years. The three year term.
It's a three year term. Any further discussion? Gene McKnight for the vote.
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
And the chair is aye. Please advise Mr. Tanner that he's been reappointed for three years.
Okay.
Um, with regard to Mr. McKnight, please put it on the agenda for the June 29 meeting. Take this up again. And I believe, well, just based on what, what I know for other boards, even though a term may have expired, they serve until their successor is, is appointed. So, um, please ask Mr. McKnight to continue to go to transportation committee meetings to represent us at transportation committee meetings. If there are any between now and June 29. If he can. I mean, he's in Colorado at the moment and
We assume, well, we don't know what's going to happen after midnight tonight, right?
And we may or may not have Zoom meetings available between now and then. So.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question that's tangentially related to this discussion?
Sure.
It just, it just occurred to me that one of, or the board's goals is to consider, um, you know, our housing policy. And I wonder if, when we're dealing and considering, uh, with, uh, considering inclusionary zoning and other elements of an overall housing policy review, if we, if we perhaps should have a conversation with the, maybe on a chair or vice chair basis, or invite some of our representatives from the transportation committee, you know, to appear before us at a hearing or a number of hearings, however, we're going to study, um, our housing policy. Because there may be some elements of access to transportation that may be part of the housing conversation.
I think, I think that's an interesting point and it's worth, we have a chair, vice chair meeting with the select board coming up, um, later this week. And Lee, is it my recollection that, um, Kate Fitzpatrick has added to the agenda? The housing?
Yes.
Housing issues? So let's discuss this on Thursday at our chair, vice chair.
Okay.
I, I have a question though, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Is it, um, and I've put this question to Lee Newman. Is it the intention of the planning department to establish any kind of advisory committee? The way we did, or by now, I think it's 15 years ago, when we were studying, uh, the zoning for our Needham Center in Chestnut Street area.
Well, I, I think that's a really a decision that the planning board needs to make and perhaps in consultation with the select board. But I would certainly recommend that there be a comparable entity created, um, of diverse interests that would oversee this work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought so too, you know, I'm glad it's going, it will be discussed at the chair, chair, vice chair meeting.
Yes, it will. Absolutely. I would, I've, I've been thinking about that and, you know, I, I think that a representative of the, uh, school committee and a representative of the finance committee, uh, are two, two members that I would like to see on that advisory committee. And now Adam has raised, raised the point that maybe somebody from the transportation committee should be.
For, for clarity, I don't know if they necessarily need to be part, that member of the transportation committee necessarily needs to be part of the ongoing work of the committee itself. But it's certainly, I would think, be helpful to discuss any impacts transportation can have in forming a housing policy.
I would hope that, because it, I think it's kind of within their jurisdiction or their purview, that the transportation committee would be considering the recent legislation that, um, that, that is promoting, um, transportation zones for housing. That was, that was passed within the past few months by the, by the legislature. Seems to be something that would, that would be within, within the purview of the transportation committee and how, how our current transport, our current public transportation availability affects, affects housing.
I'll pass that on, um, if you want me to.
Sure.
Yeah.
Please do. Anything else on, on committee appointments? At this point. So Adam, I hope you have, uh, Thursday's meeting on your calendar.
Thursday morning, Thursday morning at 8:00 AM.
Yes.
I do.
Yep.
And that's, uh, is that a Zoom meeting or are we meeting in person?
That's a Zoom meeting, I think.
Yes, this is a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
That's not an official meeting covered by the, by the open meeting law, so we can have it any way we want, I guess.
And Lee, will, will Clay send out, um, an invite for that by Zoom?
Well, Clay's not, no, someone from Sandy, from Kate's office will do that. It'll be Sandy Sincana.
Okay.
Talk to Kate if, if, um, if those who are participating wish to actually get together at some place in town hall and Kate has a room, I'd be, I, I, I have no qualms about having an in-person meeting.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll reach out to her and see how she wants to manage it.
Yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda. Minutes. We had one set of minutes in our package. And, um, I believe that, uh, we have not all had a chance to review those minutes. So, uh, let's defer discussion on those minutes until, until the next meeting on June 29. That's okay with everybody.
Sure.
We need a motion on that. We'll just, just moving on. Correspondence? I didn't see any, any correspondence that has come in other, other than 1688 Central Avenue, from which we got a lot of correspondence. Lee, is there anything else for correspondence?
No, there's nothing else to add there.
Okay. Report from the planning director.
Uh, just a couple of things. I think, um, there's going to be a training session. I think Paul may participate with me, um, on Wednesday on
Yeah, I'm, I'm not going to be able to make it.
Okay, that's fine. I, I will go and members of my staff are also going. We're going to learn more about these hybrid meetings and how they're organized and how they're managed with cable and just kind of what to expect. Uh, so that training session is going to be on Wednesday, on Wednesday afternoon. Um, and I think Paul already mentioned this, uh, Thursday of this week, there's going to be a chair, vice chair meeting between the select board and, um, and members of, of the planning board. Um, and I think we'll be talking about, um, the hospital and what it's, what some of its plans are looking forward. And also, um, a great conversation on the development of a housing plan and what that strategy and implementation plan should look like. Um, and then just so you know, I've been working, I'm going to be working actually on the outdoor seating, um, policy and the changes that the working group talked about making to the existing regulatory framework, to codify some of the practices that have happened under the COVID regime, um, and which are constrained under our current regulatory framework. So that when the COVID exemptions disappear, restaurants will be able to continue to offer this outdoor dining in a regulatory framework that makes sense. So I'm working on that and I hope to have a draft of, 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 uh, of what changes are required under zoning as is currently written. That would be, um, that we need to go forward, uh, to a tough fall town meeting on. So I'm, I'm working on that. And just a heads up, um, I understand from conversations with the town that they'll be filing their application soon for the redevelopment of the commons, the upgrade of the commons. Um, and so that will likely be on a planning board agenda. I'm assuming probably now then it's going to be in August, um, given the fact that we've kind of targeted, uh, the July meeting for 1688 Central Avenue.
May I ask Lee about the agenda for our next meeting on the 29th? I'd just like to get an idea of what's on the agenda for that meeting.
Okay, so we have one, uh, filing, um, from Needham Gateway. This is the property where Panera Bread is located. They're coming in for a special permit amendment. Their current permit, um, when it was issued at the time, there were concerns about parking and the adequacy of parking on that site. And so there were certain as of right uses that were specifically called out, um, in their permit is not being allowed. That included restaurants and included banks, um, and some other high pack parking generation uses. So they're coming in. They want an amendment to their underlying permit.
They want a waiver?
Pardon me?
They want a waiver of the parking requirement specifically?
They want the, they want, we, the, they want to have the restrictions on uses that can go in there that were placed on them lifted. So even though the zoning, for example, allowed banks, allowed restaurants, allowed some of these higher parking generation uses because they didn't have adequate parking on the site and there was concern for spillover. Um, and some of those uses were allowed by right. The permit itself disallows them irrespective of what the zoning says. So what they're asking is to have the condition lifted so that the only thing that's governing the uses that can go in that building are what's allowed in the zoning and not the further constraint that the planning board at the time placed on the property. So that's, um, on the agenda, um, for the next coming meeting. The outdoor seating, um, policy will be on the agenda. And we've asked Natasha to do a presentation on Uari, um, at, at the, at the next planning board meeting. So that's, Alex, is there anything I've missed?
Nothing is coming to mind.
Okay, good.
Okay, but Panera Bread is already there.
Yes, Panera Bread is there. I mean, they, that property got a special permit at the time it was built. It was a consolidation of a couple of different lots and both the Panera Bread building was put up and there's a second building on the property. Um, and so they got a special permit and that special permit placed restrictions on use on that property.
And Panera, and, and one restriction was no restaurants, but Panera Bread is there.
That's, no, 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 sit down. So no, sit down.
Sit down.
No, sit down.
Sit down.
And I, I know that the men's clothing store that, you know, we used to frequent there, um, has been closed for quite a while. So I think there are vacancies in that building.
I think there are vacancies in that building. I think that their primary tenant is at the Web, Web, I can't think of the, the names.
Frank Webb?
Yes, I think that they may be leaving and moving to another location. So that building might open up. So I think
They are, of course, because that's the, uh, that's only, is, is only but of appeals. Remember we talked, that's one of those only but of appeals, the third item. Web is 68 Highland Avenue.
Yeah, they're moving. So they're going out of that building. So that's going to be a vacancy. And I think they probably want to just make sure that when they're trying to market the property, um, that they have the flexibility that they, that they think they need to be able to find tenants to re-tenant the space.
And if it was, if it was a, uh, another restaurant, what would happen in terms of the parking requirement?
Well, the parking requirement for the restaurant is going to be greater than the parking requirement for retail. So the parking requirement for retail is one parking, which is how the building was predominantly authorized. So that's one parking space for every 300, um, square feet. The parking spaces requirement for a restaurant is one, there's 10 parking spaces for the takeout station plus one parking space for every three seats in the restaurant. So restaurants generally, um, per square foot have a higher parking demand than their use. And so because it was already on the wire or receiving waivers, there were certain uses that, um, were not allowed on their face in that permit at the time.
So if a restaurant pragmatically actually went in, or if a landlord, if a, a restaurant tenant was the only viable tenant, the landlord had in a reasonable period of time to, uh, tenant up the, uh, space, to rent up the space. And there is no fewer spaces available. Uh, I mean, there's no spaces available. They are required to seek a waiver. Correct?
I, I think the concern was at the time that was done, that it was, that they, they wanted to ensure that there was sufficient parking on the property itself, uh, to accommodate the uses and they don't want to have any spillover. And some of the people who own property around that development at the time were concerned with those issues. So that's, that's basically what the, what the hearing is about. on the twenty nine.
Okay, thank you.
I apologize for being late. I thought because the we didn't have an agenda item, the meeting was canceled, so I apologize.
That's okay.
It's a long day. It's been a long day.
So let the record show that Natasha Espada has
Finally got has finally arrived.
And with that, she moves to adjourn.
But you're not actually moving to adjourn. I'm just talking about it because
Would you would you like a summary of what we've done so far, what we've done? Natasha?
Sure, I'm sorry. I really apologize. I'm sorry. I just got completely confused.
So briefly, I'll try to run through it. On the board of appeals cases, we voted no comment on cases two and three.
Okay.
And in case one, we are making the comment that we're pointing out to the zoning board of appeals that the fact of an ADU is not in and of itself a a reason to allow a third a third garage, a third car in the garage. However, the design for this particular request, we the planning board finds finds to be I don't remember if we use the word pleasing or acceptable, but but we were in favor of this particular application. We just wanted to make it clear that we didn't want the ZBA just to say, oh, if there's an ADU, they they get a third space in the garage. On committee appointments, we discussed the fact that because of timing, it didn't make sense to to now require that we open it up. We we have asked the planning director to to start working on the format for how we will go forward to open it up. And so we did vote to to reappoint Stephen Tanner to the Design Review Board. Because you were not here, Jean McKnight recused herself on the reappointment of Stephen McKnight, so we didn't have a quorum, so we deferred that until June twenty nine.
Would you want to reconsider that?
Natasha, I'll leave that up to you as to whether you're ready to vote to reappoint Stephen McKnight tonight or whether you'd rather that we defer until June twenty nine. I don't know that it really matters all that much.
I don't think it matters. I think we can reappoint. I think I think just moving forward, letting everyone know would be great and just just opening it up. But I I think because we were doing it in such a quick way. But I think we can reappoint tonight.
Then can I have a motion?
Motion to reappoint Steve.
Stephen McKnight.
Stephen McKnight back to the Design Review.
Transportation.
Transportation committee.
Oh, sorry, transportation committee. But there was there were a couple for the design review as well, right?
That's we've reappointed him.
We had a quorum for that one. The three of us voted to reappoint Stephen.
I recuse myself naturally from the vote for Steve since he's my husband.
I don't know if that's a good reason or not.
It depends on who has dinner responsibility, I think.
The question of who's going to pick up the takeout. Adam, do I have a second to the motion?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I'll call the roll. Adam Block?
Aye.
Natasha Espada?
Aye.
And I vote aye. It's unanimous. Please let Ms. Newman, please let Mr. McKnight know that he's been reappointed to the Transportation Committee.
I may let the cat out of the bag.
We we had one set of minutes and we have not all had a chance to review them, so so we're deferring that until June twenty nine. And there's no correspondence and I'll let you read the minutes about the planning directors report we discussed.
Excuse me, Paul, but you didn't mention anything about sixty eight Wilshire Park and concern about the prior on conforming.
Right, that's right. On 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 item four on the ZBA agenda, we made a comment that the relief requested included I don't remember if, oh, a special permit on on an item that was allegedly a pre-existing non-conforming use. And we pointed out that we didn't really see any evidence of the pre-existing non-conforming existing. And so we asked the ZBA to look into that more carefully. But but the other variance requests, we essentially had no comment on. So if you got all that, that brings you up to date.
And I know we're at the end of our agenda now, but there is something I'd just like to mention. I know that at our last meeting, we decided that the planning board and I suppose the planning department will not engage this year in a study or re-study of accessory dwelling units. But I I'm involved with Eco Justice Needham Housing Group and a a group of about four people involved with that group wish to continue that as our study is something we're studying. And there a woman named Wendy Blum is a a video person and is organizing a video. I presented as part of that video, it was recorded before I left, essentially the same background that led up to the town meeting vote of about a year and a half ago to adopt the ADU. And just just to give the background on that presentation. So I wanted to let the planning board know that personally, I feel it's okay, and I hope it is, for me to be involved with this organization in 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 continuing to study accessory dwelling units in Needham.
I have to give some thought to that, Jean. I'm not going to give you an answer right now.
Well, I just want didn't want you to be surprised when you get an email saying there's a video and it's on a certain date and Jean McKnight is a participant.
I just, if you don't mind and don't take this the wrong way, just try to try to be cognizant of any potential conflict of interest that may arise in your two roles as a member of the planning board and a member of equal justice need them because they do they do take up issues that will be in front of in front of this board.
Yeah, I'm really not sure since equal justice Needham is not a nonprofit organization. It's just a group of people. So I'm not quite sure of how the conflict of interest law applies, but I will be aware of that.
I'm not saying that there's a conflict of interest law violation at all. I'm sensitive to an appearance of conflict of interest. And you know, that they 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 did speak at town meeting on zoning on a zoning matter. And they are very interested in the affordable housing situation that we will we will be taking up and they are interested, as you were mentioning, in making revisions to our ADU bylaw. And so these are all issues that I'm not asking you now to recuse yourself either on the board or on equal justice in their discussions. I'm just asking you before you you proceed to just kind of think long and hard.
Yes, I will. Okay, thank you for that guidance, Paul.
So we are actually kind of still on report of planning director and board members. So thank you, Jean, for, you know, the the report as a board member. Any other items that the that the board members would like to bring up at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Any discussions? The vote, Jean McKnight?
Aye.
Adam Block?
Aye.
Natasha Espada?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you all. Good meeting.
Thank you.